I flip where you guys sit. You guys, you guys on the right side.
Okay, yeah.
Will you be in this lecture?
Change my.
Earlier, everybody, we were over there and they were over there.
It's opposite.
It is, but you gotta be mindful.
Hey, Mayor, did you make sure that mic's on?
Seeing almost everybody's here, we'll see if anyone else shows up later, but we'll go ahead and get started. Pastor Clark, I know you're in here. If you would be so kind to do a vacation.
Sure.
Thanks, sir.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the night. Thank you for our health, thank you for our family, and we thank you for this amazing community that you live in. Lord, I pray that tonight you will give each and every council member wisdom, guidance, and direction to make the decisions that are best for our community. We greatly thank you for this, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I'm glad you're ladies. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is six thirty. We'll go ahead and call this meeting in the Lowell City Council to order. Roll call.
Eric Schein.
Here.
Roy Brunson.
Here.
Adrian Flores.
Here.
Emily Reach.
Here.
Bryant Sands.
Here.
Scott Menon.
Here.
Lisa DeGifford.
Here.
Steve Whitehead.
Here.
We have quorum.
Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Do you receive a motion? Talk me.
I did.
I could barely hear you, Tom.
Would you, the next item is the consent agenda. So the mayor would receive a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Any discussion? We got this one out a little bit late. You're late doing financials because they're doing the budget. Seeing no questions, roll call.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Adrian Flores.
Yes.
Roy Brunson.
Yes.
Bryant Sands.
Yes.
Scott Menon.
Yes.
Lisa DeGifford.
Yes.
Steve Whitehead.
Yes.
Emily Reach.
Yes.
Motion to approve. The consent agenda is approved.
I mean, next item on the agenda is the public forums. So anybody who wanted to address the council, any interested residents, august parties, hopeful candidates, who might want to address the city council, would do so now.
We'll go ahead and open it at six thirty-two.
Hi, friends. I have to say all the things. I'm Casey Coof, 603 Concord Street. You know, I'm always going to come up here and stick up for my guys and everything that they need. Ask you to give it to them. So for me, I'm gonna say that I said everything I could to you, and I hope that you've had all your questions answered in order to, to, you know, go forward with all this tonight. But I also have something to read from my principal from Lowell Elementary. We, we work so closely with the PD at school, and so my principal really, really wanted to be here tonight. He could not be, but he asked for me to read this to you all. He says, "I can't even begin to tell you how impactful it is to have an officer at the school each day. Safety is and should be the number one priority of every school. Having an officer present in the building creates a safer learning environment for everyone. My first two years, we had full-time officers, and they were well-known and loved by our students, staff, and parents. They assured the safety of our patrons at the sidewalk and the crosswalk in the morning, in the afternoons. They served as members, mentors to students, walked the halls during the day to do safety checks, assisted with emergency preparedness, and served on our threat assessment team. I had a front row seat to observing how relationships were formed between our officers and our students, our staff, our parents, and our community. These relationships help build trust and make people feel safer approaching them with matters of concern. Having an officer present has been hit and miss for this year of school, and our families have noticed they have been missed. Lowell Elementary deeply values the Lowell Police Department and their positive impact on our school safety and our culture. I urge the city council to do whatever needs to be done to support our officers and their families." And he says, "Thank you respectfully, Stephen Bowman." So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Coof.
Good evening. I'm Mike Armstrong. I'm running for Benton County Family Court Judge at the election on March third. I just wanted to come and introduce myself, and I appreciate giving me a few minutes this evening. A lot of people probably don't realize that Arkansas has the highest divorce rate in the country. We are number one on a list that we really probably don't want to be any part of, and that's a big reason why I'm running for this position. I've been practicing law here in Benton County for about twenty years now. Started out, or at least early in my career, I was a child sex abuse prosecutor here in Benton County for a few years. And since then, I've been doing almost exclusively family law cases and divorces, custody cases, guardianships, adoptions, those kinds of things. And that experience, I think, is what this county needs for this position. I'm running for Judge France's spot. He's retiring at the end of next year, and for those who don't know, Judge France handles primarily family law. That's what he does. And I think my experience is exactly what this county needs. Somebody who can step in on day one and make those tough decisions for the families and children of our community, and someone who can put that experience to work. And so, once again, thanks. I'll be around this afternoon or this evening after the meeting and talk to anybody that can answer any questions anybody has or talk to. You guys can tell me anything you want about what kind of judges you're looking for in Lowell and in Benton County. So again, thanks, and I hope to earn your trust and your support and your vote on March third. It's Mike Armstrong. Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Hi, I have a question. Linda Vanoy, 505 Ash Street. Do, the public forum, is this when I talk about an agenda item?
Yes, ma'am, you can.
One of the agenda items I want, I think it's Resolution five, maybe six, five. It's the last one on the agenda. One of the things I noticed for when we were thinking of purchasing a new building that I didn't see, that I would like to see going forward, is a plan of purchase. I would like to know, like, what we're going to do with these two buildings and how we're going to use them. How much your utility's gonna run? Because I sat down here for two nights as we did the 2026 budget, and I did not notice that much of a surplus for utilities and cost of that manner. So I'm just kind of curious as to make sure we can service that. I do understand we outgrow our buildings. I do understand things like that, but I also need, need to know the plan of, or maybe I don't need to know, but I think it would have been a much more palatable thing to get if we'd have known kind of what the plan was for, do we have an estimate of what utilities run? Do we have an estimate of what it's gonna cost us to retrofit it? I mean, I can see admin moving before we move the police department because that will be an easier and less costly expense, but I don't know how much you want to break up the city from where the employees are versus where the mayor is and how many places you want those people located in. So I would, you know, ask that we would have gotten or would have liked to have seen some kind of five-year plan to say, okay, are we remodeling in the next, are we planning on remodeling in 2026, 2027? You know, what, do we have that plan? Is it in writing somewhere? And that's the kind of thing I would have liked to have seen the city council get with this, and I don't know if they did, and I didn't see it, because I know you had some problems with emails going out because of a conversion, and conversions are off the table. I get that. But that would have been something nice to probably have been included officially in the writing. I mean, it's not that you have to, you know, stick to it and just say, "This will be forever," but it would have been nice to have seen something like that with the presentation. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Clark. Live at eight zero six Andrew Place. I'm also here to speak for the fifth resolution or the fifth item of new business today. I am strongly in favor of the city purchasing these buildings. I hope that you are as well. I understand that you have to be fiscally responsible, and I believe that you are. I'm very thankful for a mayor and a council that has been fiscally responsible and that has put the city into a position where we're able to make a purchase like this. I think it's very important that we don't get stuck because of fear of making a big step. You know, Lowell is obviously no longer a pass-through city between Springdale and Rogers. We are a community in and of ourself. We're growing. Many families and many businesses are coming into Lowell, and we need to give our police department and our city staff everything they need, as well as our fire department, everything that they need to do their jobs. So, you know, I think the location is great. I think if, heaven forbid, if somebody comes to Lowell to try to do harm to as many people as possible, they're gonna hit one of three locations. They're gonna hit an elementary school, or they're gonna hit J.B. Hunt Transport. I strongly am in favor of having resource officers in all of our elementary schools, and I know that's not the item I'm talking about, but Ms. Coof referenced it, so I'll just state that here. But the next target would be J.B. Hunt, and in a situation like that, seconds matter. And when officers could be a block away, as opposed to having to cross town to get there, I think that's important. I also think it's important, as our city expands towards the west, that we also move towards the west. And the last thing I'll say is this, from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, we all know that land only does one thing, and that's that it goes up. And from what I understand, this is a very affordable couple of buildings that we're getting at the right opportunity from a cost perspective, and I don't think that the city council will find a better opportunity anytime in the future. So thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question, if I may.
Public forum. Anyone else from the public that would like to come up and speak? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public forum at eighteen forty-one, six forty-one.
Next item on the agenda is the procedural motion, but if you want to.
Yes, ma'am, wait something before we get to the next business.
Ms. Casey brought up SROs. Do we not have them in the school anymore?
I can answer that question for you. We have the positions. We just don't have the pay to fill those positions, and so we've had to fill the street. And so I had no choice but to take them from school resource.
Gotcha. I was just, I wasn't aware that there wasn't SROs in the school anymore, so.
We're doing the best we can, but we have.
Next item, the mayor's procedural motion to dispense with the rule, and you take a motion. We do have an ordinance on the agenda tonight. So move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Adrian Flores.
Oh.
Roy Brunson.
Yes.
Bryant Sands.
Yes.
Scott Menon.
Yes.
Lisa DeGifford.
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Steve Whitehead.
Yes.
And Emily Reach.
No.
No. Okay, motion to approve. The ordinance is approved. City Clerk will read the ordinance one time by title only. Excuse me? Oh, you're right. We can put that in the, okay. My error, I left it out. Okay, procedural motion. Got it.
I mean, the next item on the agenda is old business, of which there is none, and so the new business, the first item on the agenda is an ordinance to rezonate certain real property located at Quartzsite Avenue in Benton County. A parcel number from urban thoroughfare commercial C2 to urban neighborhood residential R3 in the city of Lowell, Arkansas, and you'd receive a motion.
So move. Second.
Discussion.
Do we have a, that's why I was getting ready to say the map. So we are looking at.
It's right here.
Is that entirety?
Does not include this.
Has, was there any response from the community on Quartzsite or what, I'm sorry, what's that?
Diamond.
Diamond.
There was not response from the community.
Were they, they all sent certified letters and understood what was going on?
The signs were posted, and it was advertised. Yes. This property is a C2 property located behind C2 property that aligns Old Wire Road.
Yes, ma'am.
The current properties are a single-family residential use. When that use changes, it will change over to commercial properties. Those will remain. So the frontage will remain as C2. It's the property behind the C2 that's adjacent to the R3 to the west and R3 to the north that's requesting to rezone to R3.
Ms. Karen, what's the property directly south? Is that just a farm?
It's commercial property.
Okay.
It's currently farmed, yes.
Yeah.
And this is by the request of the property owner?
Yes. It can only be done by the request of the property owner.
And we do have a representative here.
Counsel like to hear from the property owner?
Sure. Jake Chavis with Odyssey Engineering. I'm representing the property owner here tonight. I'm here for any questions if you have any.
What's the, just the high-level plans for the property? High-level plans as far as lot size?
We brought a conceptual plan to planning commission, I believe. Essentially, we're wanting to model exactly what was built to the north of us. It's gonna be residential subdivision.
We know what the law.
Have an idea of how many homes?
I don't remember off the top of my head. I think it's somewhere around ninety-five.
No, but this is zoned, if it's zoned R3, I know the property to the west and north is, it could be as small as four thousand square foot lots. And that's what's permitted in R3 zone. Currently, you do allow residential in a C2 zone, as long as you remain two hundred foot of your commercial frontage.
So you, I hear you're saying ninety-five homes?
I believe it's, it's somewhere around there. Ninety, ninety-five, something like that.
Yeah, what we typically see is about six to seven thousand square foot lots come through. I mean, that's a standard of everything that's coming through right now.
So are these more on like a town home type of?
They were single-family.
Yes, single-family, exactly what, what's going in north or northwest.
And they would connect to Bell Street to the north and Quartzsite to the west, which is what the intent is, is to connect streets. A portion of their property is already zoned R3, so they could already build on that R3 portion connected to Quartzsite. They're just requesting to rezone their front portion.
Yeah, and to expand on what Ms. Karen is saying, the property that we actually own is, you can see along Old Wire, there's just a little sliver of a curve there. Well, that's, that's just enough space for us to put a city-dedicated street in. So the actual frontage along Old Wire, we don't own that. That will remain commercial property. So, so what we are actually proposing to rezone is just what is highlighted there with the, with the blue star, and then that little squiggly line there, that's just enough room for, for us to put a fifty-foot wide road in.
What's gonna go in where the, to the left and right of the frontage piece that's not within the rectangle?
So that's, that's up to that property owner. We don't, we don't own that.
So they only own, they don't own any of the frontage, like the squiggly line, just on?
Yeah, it's just the squiggly line there.
What is currently there right now? Looks like there's something there.
Single-family homes.
In the spaces that's not in the rectangle?
The spaces that, that they're not requesting to rezone currently, that's frontage, is all single-family homes.
How, how long has this been zoned as C2?
Since 2020.
What was it before?
More than likely R1.
Okay.
Ms. Karen, assuming the lot size is that small, it's all provided sewer by Springdale?
It is.
Ms. Karen, do we have anything else in the city that is a four thousand square foot lot?
Everything you see highlighted in dark blue could be four thousand.
No, current, currently, do we have anything that's four thousand?
You don't have a developer who has built a single-family to that extent. They, typically, you'll see multiuses come in, and so you'll see a mix of your commercial and your, you know, maybe some apartments, townhomes mixed in. I mean, that's kind of the standard of what we're seeing. We allow pretty much anything when it goes into C2. We just try to control the frontage to keep the retail, you know, as commercial.
I was just trying to get a visual of, I know an eight thousand square foot lot is pretty small, so I'm trying to picture a four thousand square foot lot with a house on it.
Are these approximately gonna look like what's over here on McClure, the subdivision just, just over there?
I'm not sure.
What are you talking about?
Very, basically vertical houses, two-story, very narrow.
I haven't seen elevations on this, and I've just really seen a conceptual design of the lot sizes, so I.
Yes, I mean, they're gonna be one-story and two-story houses. Again, we're modeling this exactly what is, was being built just to the north of us.
Approximate square footage of houses?
Yeah, anywhere from, I think it's, I wanna say eighteen to twenty-two, hundred square feet, but it, it may be sixteen to twenty-four, but I wanna say eighteen to twenty-two hundred.
And Karen, once it's rezoned, if it is, then the plan will come through, a plat, a proposal. But right now, we're not, we're not engineering the neighborhood. We don't, we really can't hold the applicant to a house size or a lot size.
That is correct, Tom.
It's just whatever fits into the.
Yeah, whatever you accept as a zone, this applicant could fall through, and they could not build.
So whatever you place zoning on this property, it will be that zone, and the highest and best use of that property could build on that property within the zone. But just know currently, you could put apartments in that zone as it stands without being rezoned.
Now, I'll tell you, this is yours and my ward, and this is literally my neighborhood. I know that my, my residents would love to have single-family homes more than.
Well, I'm a hundred percent supportive of this. The only thing that gives me pause is just the lot size. It's, I'd like to see the lot size, you know, a little few, fewer lots, fewer houses and little bigger houses. I'd much rather see it as residential than commercial. But, again, we'll have to wait to get to that.
Yeah, but we, we wouldn't be able to, to actually do that in this location because that would be considered spot zoning, and it would be zoning backwards, basically. What you really want to see along your frontage is commercial. Behind your frontage would be more of your buffer zones, which we consider the R3s, is your higher-density zones, and between that and your single-family, bigger lots, your bigger lots are your R1 zone, and between the R1 and your R3s, you'll have an R2, which are intermediate. You can put duplexes, townhomes, things of that nature.
So I guess the other thing is, I mean, we know that, you know, oh, you know, the Dick Trammell Highway, what are you gonna call it over there now, two sixty-five? I mean, as we continue to add these neighborhoods, we're gonna continue to have traffic issues over there. And I know we're at the mercy of RDOT, if I'm not mistaken, on overall plans there, but that is one concern. And I do appreciate, if you, I did leave my house a couple times past week or so, and did see a police officer sitting there in morning traffic. I really appreciate that, because that has been an issue over there that. So that's my only concern, too, is as we add these. I love to see the residential going in. But we definitely gonna have to have something done with that road sooner than later.
Yeah, we're at the mercy of RDOT when it comes to traffic control, really on that highway as far as your intersections. So we are doing intersection studies on McClure and Monroe both to do intersection improvements, which could essentially slow down traffic there.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Eric Schein.
Yes.
Adrian Flores.
Yes.
Roy Brunson.
Yes.
Bryant Sands.
Yes.
Scott Menon.
Yes.
Lisa DeGifford.
Yes.
Steve Whitehead.
Yes.
Emily Reach.
Yes.
Okay, the motion to approve the ordinance is approved. I will read the ordinance one time by title only. To rezone certain real property located at Quartzsite Avenue in Benton County, parcel number one twos dash zero zero six one eight dash zero five three from urban thoroughfare commercial C2 to urban neighborhood residential R3 in the city of Lowell, Arkansas. I will give it number eleven fifty-seven.
Mayor, next item on the agenda is ordinance, there is an ordinance right now, but it's an ordinance, it's really act, treaty three for the city council's consideration. Mayor, currently, the city council, we have wards in the city, but everyone runs at large. Most cities do, of course. I'm not quite sure why treaty three was written. Somebody may know. It may have been the county clerk saying, we gotta, we gotta figure out what y'all are doing. And if you pass an ordinance, we need the ordinance by a certain deadline. But what the, what the state law says, the new state law says is, that was passed this past session, is if you're going to run, if you want to change and run by ward, in other words, people have to live in the ward, and, and only people in that ward vote for that person. They only appear on the ballot in that ward, in the voting places in that ward. Then you have to get an ordinance to that effect to the county clerk by a certain deadline before the, the elections. Again, right now, we're divided into wards. We have an ordinance to that effect, and we run at large in Lowell. So if we do nothing, that stays the same. In other words, the, the new law says, if you do nothing, you continue to run at large. So the city council, I guess, if, I don't know if that issue has been an issue about people who want to change to, to wards, but if we, if we do want to change to wards, we can draft an ordinance to that effect and then send it over to the county clerk. Otherwise, we don't need to do anything at this point. Bellamy can certainly send our current ordinance over to the county clerks. They, they'll be, they'll know that we're at large. But we don't need to do anything else unless we want to change to ward voting.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we just submit our current ordinance and stay as we are.
I would second that.
Agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is, Eric, the next item is a resolution to approve the 2026 budget for the city of Lowell, Arkansas. No big deal, really. You'd receive a motion.
Entain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to table this.
I have a motion to approve and second, Mr. Schein.
Yes, I know, and. Yes, I know, and I, I'm, I'm gonna reach out to my fellow councilman and ask you to remove your motion. Uh, I think that we need to table this. We just got yet another budget this evening that none of us have looked at. For us to pass it as it is would be not frugal for us to, to look at. I am so excited. I wanted to tell all the police officers and all the firefighters, I'm so excited to see your salaries and the things that we wanna support you with. But I got this on my desk, and I haven't even looked at it. For me to pass this would not be responsible. I at least need to look at it before I pass it.
Are you making the motion?
I have to wait for them to remove their motion in second.
That's right.
Yeah, I concur with what Ms. Shine says. I just wanna make sure all of the police officers and firemen that are here tonight, look, we, this board, this city council has been very supportive through the whole budget process of what you guys need, and we still are. I agree, uh, with Ms. Shine. I mean, I've still got some questions, and, and I wanna make sure, you know, that we fully understand this before we vote on it. Um, and just some last minute stuff here, so, but I just wanna make sure everybody does understand. We definitely know what needs to be done with our fleet, police and fire department, and we've been supportive all along. So that's not the issue at all on here, just some of the other question marks and last minute changes and.
As mayor, in fact, I think I even, last meeting, acknowledged, uh, Chief Coofe for bringing us even more salary for our police officers. So I, I'm excited to look at this and excited to get through it and get, excited to get done with it, but I, I just can't pass it without not even looking at it.
Jay, can we, we, Jay on this?
Sure, we can take discussion.
Jay, you better. So the email you sent out, obviously there was, you know, maybe ten, ten or twelve lines here of changes. Is that the sum of every change since our last?
Other than a few thousand here, thousand there, like you talked about last time?
Yeah, I'm not worried about that.
The vast majority is what came out in that email, yes. And the only change in the most recent one was the question that Ms. DeGifford asked about the street person versus the public.
Excuse me, I didn't ask that person. Uh, it was somebody else who asked it, so let's make that be on the record.
Okay, well, I saw your name on the email. I apologize, okay? So, um, that's the only change there was, is moving one person from parks to street. That's the only change that's in there in the last, um, iteration.
So the numbers haven't changed from what we got last Friday to what we got yesterday?
From Saturday to yesterday.
From Saturday to yesterday?
Other than that's the only change.
And what about yesterday to today? I mean, I, I have a whole new budget. And then what I had, what I got yesterday didn't even have the planning department in it, so I couldn't even look at it. It wasn't a complete budget.
I apologize for that.
So a couple of things here. Obviously, we talked about the revenue.
But the electronic one that was sent out had everything in it, so everybody did have everything.
When your city email isn't working, you're trying to read everything on your phone, it's really hard to do, Jay. And I'm not, I'm not blaming you, but it's really hard to do.
I could understand that. I couldn't read this on my phone.
And it's, I mean, we haven't even had it just over twenty-four hours to make sure that.
And, and I'll just even say, but the problem is, it's just twenty-four hours ago, didn't even have the planning commission. So I didn't even have a, a complete budget, and I haven't even seen the one, the newest one that was sitting on my desk when I got here this evening.
Oh, I told you, the only exception to that one.
You can tell me anything, I, but I.
It's fine.
So Jay, as we walk through this, I know we left here saying it was two hundred sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars difference that we, we knew we were, you know, over budget that we were gonna find. And we said, we left it to you to go find. I see you did a, you know, a net revenue reduction. We, we were questioning some of the tax based on where we are here today, so I'm assuming you adjusted that at one hundred thirty-six thousand. Tell me a little bit, you had, form me a corrections, improving revenue by a hundred thousand, so.
Well, there, there were some minuses and some pluses, both. Um, the minuses, like that were in that email, where I, I lowered the city, um, sales tax by a hundred thousand. County by some, a turn back, one of the turn back Sater County by some, um, permits, I think, went down by several thousand dollars. Um, and then a, a few increases. Like I thought, oh, well, maybe we could, as was mentioned last, in one of the work sessions about Mudtown Days, perhaps we could get a few more people in the community or sponsors in the community to donate a little bit more money for that, so I added a few more thousand dollars to that. Um.
I don't see that on this list.
No, it's on the budget changes, on November thirteenth. That wouldn't be in that, it would be in your email.
This, this was the list that the mayor sent to me that has the changes as of seven seventeen.
Eleven seventeen?
Eleven seventeen. These were the changes. So I don't see that on there, but.
Bryant, was that in the email that you were looking?
The one that I'm looking at is from the November thirteen budget changes that you sent out.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't repeat changes that I had made. Each time I made a change, I said what some of the changes were, or said what the changes were.
It was on Google Doc.
Something that was made on the thirteenth, which is, was last week.
So a question on passing the budget. What is our legal deadline? What do we have to, do we ha, is there this meeting or do we have until the next meeting to get it passed?
February one.
Okay.
The place of February one.
I got it submitted to you before December first, so this is my submittal.
Okay, so we can.
Tom, did you say February one?
February one. The next year, believe it or not.
But can we discuss the?
I don't wanna go that long.
Problems with doing that?
Oh, yeah.
Don't wanna go that long.
Don't do that.
No, I, you know, the latest for all of us would be by the December meeting.
By the December meeting.
Prepped and ready by.
The late Bill Fleming, if anyone has the pleasure of being as old as me or older and knew Bill Fleming, it misfully, he used to yell at me, you know, budgets are to be changed. You know, you cannot have a budget that's locked. There's, there's no such thing as a budget that works all year round. And he used to clap his hands in front of me and say, you change it every day and twice on Sunday. In other words, you guys are locked into your, the, the requirement of a budget is that it be balanced. Cannot, cities in Arkansas cannot do any kind of deficit spending in their budget, so that's the requirement. But of course, it's not a stone, uh, setting as far as the, the numbers. You guys can change as you need to.
So how much time would everybody like to have to look over everything where we say no more changes?
Well, I think that's what we have discussed, is I think it is, as bad as most don't.
Because I'm only doing this because of requests.
Sure, I understand, and, and appreciate that. And I, and I just, I think what we need to do is, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like one more work session before the next meeting, and make sure when we walk out of that session, we're, it's very, very few changes, and there will be, will be no changes after we walk out that door that night and what we vote on.
Yeah.
I think that's what everybody's requesting here, is no more changes after we, we all come to agreement. I think that's part of the point of aggravation right now, is that we do walk, talk through some things, and then, and look, we gave you the liberty to say, we should go reduce and so forth. We understood that. But some of this other stuff, that we keep saying, okay, this went up, this changed, you know, like I asked capital request lower, you know, that was by thirty thousand. I, I need to know why, because I thought that was to go toward, you know, cyber attacks and so forth and, and security, so.
And we had another position that was added that we didn't know anything about. So, I mean, we, we just need to talk through some of these things that we, we're not quite ready to.
Absolutely. I just would like to know the timeframe.
My, my timeframe is we can do it on a Tuesday, and we can do it in, next week is a holiday week. I wouldn't suggest trying to do that in a holiday week.
Because I won't be here at normal to mayor.
But, uh, I, I would not have a problem with the week after that, uh, on a Tuesday to.
The second.
Get together and, and make this a final answer.
So knowing where we are with a motion is second, so.
I need to withdraw that.
I'll withdraw my second.
Withdraw?
So December second.
I'll withdraw the motion.
And I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next council meeting with having a work session between, on, and two weeks from today.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Emily has something to say.
Understand, but I have to go through this part, and then we can get to that part. Thank you.
I have my surgery on the first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If we'd be able to do it a little bit after that.
Can we, the, the next week after that?
Yeah, if that would be okay.
Would that be okay with everybody?
The ninth?
Oh.
I'm, I'm open the ninth.
Because that gets us past the Christmas stuff as well.
Yes, ma'am. That was my, that was my goal, is to make sure that everybody was here, so, yes, I would love to make that the ninth.
To the ninth.
At six?
Six thirty.
Six thirty, or can we do six? I know we went back and forth last time because you couldn't make it at six.
I can't make the ninth anyway, so I won't be here for that.
What, what day of the week is that?
Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday? Tuesday the?
Ninth.
Tuesday the ninth.
It's not, yeah, it's not.
But at this point, it's, it's a legislative. All I have to do is make sure I present it, whatever changes you guys need to make.
Can we do six so we don't run super late? Does that work for everybody?
Six is fine for me. Six. Good for you, Jay?
Yep. I have the six.
And if there's any changes before the ninth?
Well, please, please, please.
I don't, yeah, I, I would say right now, there's no, there's no changes until that meeting. This budget we have is what we're gonna start with.
We're gonna start with this that was given to us tonight.
Yeah.
And work off of that. Is that where we're all at?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Jay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
I know it's not easy.
I think you put a lot of time.
And it's been a lot of spreadsheets for you, and so thank you for your patience, for your kindness.
All good.
Appreciate you.
We're ready to vote.
Do we have to vote on this?
Still a motion pending.
We're still in the discussion portion of this. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call.
Lisa DeGifford?
Yes.
Roy Brunson?
Yes.
Adrian Flores?
Yes.
Steve Whitehead?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Scott Menham?
Epstein.
Mayor, next item on the?
Emily Reach?
Yes.
Anne Bryant Sands?
Yes.
The motion to ta, the motion to table the budget work session on twelve nine twenty-five at six o'clock P M has passed.
Mayor, there's somebody, the, uh, agenda is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Eastern Computer Exchange LLC for the city of Lowell, Arkansas, and you'd receive a motion.
Entertain a motion?
The move.
Second.
Discussion.
Ms. Mayor, I'm not an I T techy, computer nerdy guy. What we got?
It's the purchase of a network storage array. Um, the current one we have, eh, one of them is at end of life, the other one's coming up to end of life. It is cheaper to buy a new one than it is to buy an old one.
What do you mean?
Do we store our information on? Yes, sir. Um, twenty twenty-six, the price goes up eighteen percent, so I thought I'd save a little bit of money and try to buy it now and save ourselves the money in the budget for next year.
It's like a drive of, instead of A W S, right?
Yeah, this is just a contractor through Dell. It was state contract, so there is no waiving or, or bidding process. It's done through state contract.
I was looking at, um, the parts, some of the parts listed here, and noticed that even the exact same brand, uh, manufacturer off the shelf is a lot less for some of them. Is there a reason, any reason why that would be?
Rephrase your question?
Um, so I was looking, for instance, at some of these, um, parts that they're listing. Uh, for instance, there's a cable listed for, let me get over to my notes here. Cable listed for, uh, two hundred ninety-two dollars and forty cents that from Dell themselves, so exactly the same part. Off the shelf is sixty dollars and sixty-nine cents. And I've noticed a couple of those, uh, probably more in there as well. Is there a reason, reason why that would be?
Um, we were quoted that, so, um, no, I don't have that.
So perhaps would it be worthwhile to get competitive bidding on this?
Um, I have to use Dell, so you tell me, who would you like me to use?
Well, I mean, the, one would assume that these are the markups from this company, right?
And they're gonna come in and do the installation, because I don't have the time to.
Right.
Unless you wanna volunteer.
No, I'm not saying anyone here does that. I'm saying, would it be worthwhile, given that some of these parts are pretty heavily marked up, it looks like, to see what else is out there as far as the market goes?
These power vaults are a package deal. If you start separating everything out, you're gonna greatly increase your price for just one power cord.
Well, no, I'm just saying, it's indicative of perhaps there's other instances of that.
If you start pricing everything out and buying it separately, you're gonna greatly increase your price overall.
You want me to piecemeal this together?
I think, are you saying, like, make sure that we're getting the best price?
Right, I just don't want to see it.
It's a negotiated state contract. I don't have, there's no negotiating with the state contract. The state does the negotiating for us.
So this is a state?
This is a state bid. I got state bid pricing for this.
And you also have to think about that one power cord. Is it powerful, or is, is it heavy enough to carry the load that's gonna be on it? Where was it made?
Oh, it was the exact same manufacturer, everything.
On the face, maybe not behind the scenes.
It was from Dell directly.
I, I understand, but, I mean, it could be Dell, it could be a part number, but is it for that chassis setup? I mean, we're, I'm putting, it's, it's a NAS, a NAS array that's going in. They may mark me up on one thing, but I'm getting a discount on the array and the drives. So does it equal out the total discount was shown on what we're getting, you know, on state bid? Do I lose those discounts to try to save the money that you're, you know, mentioning on that power cord? Or is it a power cord, or is it even one of my fiber connections?
It was the, uh, get back over to it.
You're just trying to make sure we're getting the best.
Exactly.
I don't nego, I, that's why I don't, I don't get, I have no negotiation in this. It's a state bid, and I, I went through and provided a snapshot of a week usage, and they provided me what we would need, uh, with growth.
Okay. Just wanna make sure we're getting, that we're not getting taken advantage of.
It's state bid. I, if I had the power to renegotiate going through somewhere else, I would, but it's a Dell product. I have to maintain certain, um, requirements if something goes down. There are not a lot of people that offer that, so, um, I have to go through state bid or state contract to see who's available. And Dell is the leading, uh, manufacturer for that.
Okay.
Also, that two ninety-two forty is not for a single cable, that's for four?
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but they have the list price to the left, and actually, our price is on the right, so I'm assuming.
So we're talking four cables at the cost that you mentioned, not one?
Yeah, seven nine, seven hundred ninety-two is list, and we're getting it two ninety-two forty.
We're good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Adrian Flores?
Yes.
Roy Brunson?
Yes.
Bryant Sands?
Yes.
Scott Menham?
Yes.
Lisa DeGifford?
Yes.
Steve Whitehead?
Yes.
And Emily Reach?
Yes.
Motion to approve this resolution has been approved. It is, uh, resolution number twenty-five dash forty-two.
Ms. Mayor? Yes, sir? Can I ask for a two-minute recess? Okay, we'll go recess, seven eighteen. Chair? You can't put Christmas music on, Aaron? Over on the break, you can put Christmas music on. No, don't, don't touch it, because it's, we're, it's, something else I have to fix.
What does that mean, Aaron?
It's, that system's broken right now. We're limping on it, I have to, I have to work on that.
I love that, he answers.
Yeah, he's like, no, no, no touch. Please. It was working this morning, and it's not working now, so.
No coffee tonight. No coffee tonight.
Is this the last thing? What are you on me?
Yes.
Oh, when I said, I was just saying to myself, is this the last thing? Sorry, I got my, my water and my hot tea, I'm like, at least I'm not having a happy, I got my cough drops. It seemed to be healthy, as opposed to last time. Yes. There's all different flavors, Tanya, there's plain, and there's cherry, and.
Just take them off, I mean.
Don't take them off.
I like those beeson eggs.
I have a whole jar.
I like them.
I have a whole jar of cough drops, so I stuck my hand, stuck my hand in the jar and grabbed a handful.
Yeah, I don't know why.
You look adorable in every night.
I was watching eleven.
Oh, you look adorable too.
Seven twenty-two, we've got another.
The first work session, we went through it, we chapped the budget up, then we told them to cut it.
When can I get with you to fix my computer and laptop, so they talk to the new T, this new address?
I don't know if that's.
We got everybody back, so we'll go ahead and back in session at seven twenty-three.
It's over two minutes.
Last item, Mayor. Last item of the agenda is a resolution authorizing the mayor to renegotiate an executor real estate contract in order to purchase property located two two four and three zero six, at J.B. Hunt, I'm assuming that's J.B. Hunt Drive, maybe?
Yes, it is.
Corporate Drive in the city of Little Arkansas, and to appropriate the same, and, here, whenever we buy, lease, sell, rent property, you have to do so by resolution, and so that's, that resolution is for, and you'd receive a motion.
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Anne Sands. Mr. Sands.
He's so soft.
Discussion.
Mr. Mayor. I have done some research, and just looking around, I don't understand, I don't know if, if everybody understands exactly what we're looking at. When we start looking at, at numbers, numbers and math don't lie. The first thing that we're looking at is, right now, in this building, with the city hall, city council, and the, the police department, and the, the courts. We are sitting right at. All three combined at seventeen thousand five hundred and forty square feet. What we're looking at, just in one building alone, is twenty thousand four hundred and ninety-two square feet, the other one is twenty thousand eighty-eight square feet. Out of that, what we have is, we have my world, we have two thirty-ton AC units, we have six five-ton units that are on there, the other one has seven twelve-ton units, all at fifteen years old. Estimated, they're at their, end of their life, at about a million dollars' worth of HVAC. These are not common units, these, especially the one for the IT room, is a very unique unit. If we did go forward to this, we would, we would just be dwarfed by Bentonville, that has sixty-five thousand in population. We're gonna be moving our, our police department from, right now, it is one point eight two miles from the north, and one point two miles from the south, so we're fairly centrally located. Till it'll be two and a half miles from the north, to point four three miles from our southern border. You guys have no idea how much utilities we're talking about. Then we start talking about the, the windows, none of them are bulletproof, there are, I, dyslexia and math, trying to do this, I, I think we're right around sixty-five windows, just in the one building that we're gonna have for a police department. The upgrades that we're gonna have to have, and, at, at the end of this, it's six million dollars for these two buildings, we can't buy one building. At a hundred and forty-nine dollars a square foot for one building, I could, I could start to entertain that, because of the fact that, as we've talked about, it is a good price per square foot. The problem is the volume. The volume is not twenty thousand, it's forty thousand. It's over forty thousand five hundred square feet. Not talking about the fence that's gonna have to enclose us, we're not talking about all the things that we're gonna have to do to make this a police department. As Chief Cuth told me personally, we have never had a purpose-built police station. I'd love to see a purpose-built police station, I'd love to see it right here on our property that we have. If you look at it, we have three point one seven acres, right here, we have point three acres, we have a whole lot of property that we don't use behind us, between, between us and the, the park. If we really wanted to get excited and really do some stuff, there is the Bradford Family Trust property right over here, it's point five two acres. Across the street, the street department, we have one point seven five acres, Heritage Park, we have one two, point two four acres, and, and the fire department has one point zero three acres, we have a lot of acreage right here. And before we start throwing six million dollars at something, I'd love to know what it would cost to build our own purpose-built police station, right here, on our own property.
We have that information for you, if you let Chief Cuth speak about it.
Okay, and the other thing I would like to just say is, right down the street at two one two Presidential, there is a building for sale, that is ten thousand seven hundred and sixteen square feet, that is two point three five seven million. Have that flyer for you guys, if you're interested, so it would be right down the street from where we're at, it's also for lease, if we were to, to build, and to do something here, that would be something we could lease and, and have right here in our backyard.
Yeah, the, to build a, a purpose-driven police department, it's anywhere from, from four or five hundred to a thousand, the state police was, was a thousand a square foot.
The, the state police department included, now, it's a twenty-five acres, and they have a criminal lab.
Yeah.
And they have a DOT.
Right.
And they have tests, we don't, we don't need to build any of that.
Yeah, that's on the high end, like I said, four or five hundred a square foot is probably reasonable.
Okay.
And we're asking for one forty-nine plus, whatever, we'd probably be under three hundred dollars a square foot.
No, you're asking for six million, there's, there's a difference.
That's, that's, that's correct.
I'm gonna stop playing with the, the funny numbers, and we're just gonna talk about the six million.
Those are actual numbers.
Yeah, they were actual numbers, six million, plus, like I said, I know for a fact it's gonna be a million dollars to upgrade just the air conditioning.
Okay, what this does is it allows us to have a domino effect, if you, if we purchase these buildings, that means that frees up money for a new fire department, we need a new city hall. I have three different locations where I store things, I have four hundred square feet of, of space for something I need three thousand square feet for.
Okay.
And that's evidence, this is a perfect building for our police department, and for our city hall, in a perfect spot, and to go what they said earlier, my plan is basically to, to protect human lives.
Oh, I agree.
And that is a perfect spot, so if you're talking about location.
Well, I'm just gonna say.
This protects human lives, this, this, this is for the safety of the citizens of Little.
What we're talking about, we're gonna have a bigger city council, city hall, and a bigger police department than Bentonville.
It's very common for police departments to inherit other buildings, Gravit, Silom Springs, they're all doing the same thing, this is how it's done here, affordably, in Northwest Arkansas.
I, I don't disagree that, you know, inheriting other buildings and stuff, I just, first of all, when you, when you're saying these numbers, have we had an engineer to give us numbers of what it would cost? Do we have any, any estimates on that?
Go ahead.
This would allow us to start the due diligence process, it doesn't say that we're gonna sign it, we still have a due diligence for, but this would allow us to start the due diligence, which would be getting inspector, looking at mechanical, getting, hiring an architect, but if I'm gonna spend all of that money just to say, we're not gonna do it. I mean, you understand, we have people that are having to double up in office spaces here, I have a police chief, a fire chief, a building inspector, who are in this building, because they don't have room in their other building.
I, I don't disagree with that.
Oh, I, go ahead.
And I understand that, but I'm, I have the, the rationalization of, when we look at the utility costs, just of running those buildings, just off of this budget, we don't have the money. If we look at the upgrade costs, the upgrade fees to do those, the, like I said, it's over a million dollars to, to upgrade the billion, so we're not at six, we're not at seven, we're, we're over seven million, I'm gonna say we're probably pushing eight or nine billion by the time we're really done looking at this.
I would probably disagree, but I would prefer to get a mechanical inspector to look at the equipment before I'd make that assessment.
Well, I don't need a mechanical inspector, I've got twenty-five years, and I've already inspected it, I went over there with Chief Cuth to look at it, I've already looked at the model and serial numbers, I've already done the information, I know the guy that maintains these units, I already know the, the equipment right now, and I can tell you they are all at end of life, and we're already at.
Yeah, that's why I asked during presentation for a million and a half, for remodel.
But this is for air conditioning, we haven't done anything but air conditioning, at that million and a half.
Exactly. The only thing that I need to fit in there is, is some extra bathrooms and put up walls.
That involves a lot of concrete work, going.
I understand that, I'm not a construction guy, but I'll, I'll tell you that, that's why I shot at a million and a half, so we could do these things. But I, it's, you're not gonna get another building like this, and again, it's a domino effect, it's gonna be harder to get a police department, a city hall, and a fire department with this kind of money that we're putting out.
I was told I would not get my police and fire department to the same as the average of Northwest Arkansas.
Oh, what's your context?
I'm saying, don't tell me I can't do something, I've worked hard, I worked hard to get my police, my fire salary, to a point where everybody told me I would never do it, I've had mayor after mayor tell me I can't do it.
This is a good deal.
I, it, it's a good deal, but it's not a good deal for us, because we have a finite amount of money.
I have a question, how, obviously, both of you are very passionate about this, and I don't think anybody sitting up here disagrees that something needs to be done, I don't think there's any disagreement with that fact. I would ask both of you, how long have you been discussing this, because I think what you're getting from us, this was dropped in our lap, last council meeting, and it was a bit of a shock, to go out and spend six million dollars, and we knew nothing about this, so why weren't we brought along to the discussion, if this, something had been discussed for some time period? I think you, we're very supportive, as Mr. Schein said, we're very supportive of what you need, but to have it dropped in our lap like it was the last meeting, I think is where you're getting some pushback right now. And that, on top of, I agree with some, some opening comments of the public forum, I wanna see a plan, what is the plan, what is the plan, what is the expectation, and they don't have to be perfect, but what is the expectation of what things are going to cost, once we do make the move? What is gonna be done with the property we have here, what's the plan? And if you have that, great, let's discuss it, we went through two budget sessions, none of this was discussed, this was not brought up during one of the budget sessions of spending this money.
And I'll speak for Jay and Chris, operations at city hall have stopped, working on, because of the budget, and working on all the changes that we've been asked to make, we're now just trying to catch up on three weeks of paying bills. So, no, but to relate to the earlier question, how long has this been a discussion? Since I started? Before I started? Eldon was talking about trying to do something?
For a police department, that's correct.
And we look at things, and by the time we can actually try to make an offer, it's sold.
I have a question.
Yes.
About the budget. Looking at the, what was given to us, and how much money we have sitting in fund reserve, which I'm assuming this is where it's coming from, right?
It's listed on the, in the, on the agreement, or the ord, resolution you have, it shows the different breakouts of where the money will come from?
Okay.
I have a question, I think I'm seeking clarification for this. If we were to say yes to this, you're saying this is getting the ball rolling.
It's the first step, yes, ma'am?
It's the first step, okay? With that first step, we are committing one hundred thousand dollars, right off the bat. off the bat. Is that correct?
It is a...
It's fully renewable.
Thank you.
I'm sorry?
It's fully renewable.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I wanted to ask, you had mentioned earlier. So, take this property out of the picture. Say, we came to you and said, "Chief Coos, build police department, police building you wanna build, irregardless, whatever. What kind of square footage would you need?"
If we are to grow into it, and just where we're at now, I mean, 20,000's a lot, but that's also court. Court's gotta occupy that building as well. So, it would, 10,000-15,000 square feet, somewhere in there, would be reasonable.
What does court need? By chance, do you know? I have no idea.
Probably in between 2 and 4.
The court is half of the building, the building is just over 8,000 square feet.
Yeah, so we got 4,000, they have...
Right, they have 4, and the police department has 4.
Now, is it a requirement for court to be in the police building?
No, it just is more secure.
Mr. Mayor, can you give a reference as to where we can find the breakdown you were talking about?
It's on your resolution.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question, Adrian.
I was looking for a reference as to where we can find the breakdown of where the funds come from that he was...
Oh.
He was...
I just went through the whole doc.
So Chief, if you split the difference on things, you said 10,000-15,000 square foot would be ideal. If you called it 12, and you split the difference 400-500 a square, so you split that difference to 450, a purpose-built police station would be 5.4 million dollars.
The other thing that we could also do is, we could make the whole building a storm shelter. We could get grants to actually help us pay for this. Right now, there's no grants available because we're at the end of the year, so we're paying for all this straight out of pocket.
The...
The building itself is not available for a storm shelter unless we were to go back through and re-fortify that entire building.
The old computer room itself was...
Well, that's what they're gonna use for their computers and for their evidence room.
We didn't fill that computer room up with computer equipment for J.B. Hunt. City Lowell's not gonna fill that up with computer equipment. You could make a small part of that. It's already fortified.
But you're gonna have to make it secure away from everybody else if you were to make it a storm shelter. When we built the senior center, I really, really pushed for it to be a storm shelter, and we never even looked at it. And the number of people that have requested such an item to be brought to us, you know, the ability for us to have the majority of this paid for, for making it a storm center and making it something that the community could go to, we're not gonna get any smaller. We're gonna have more homeless people around here, so having a warming center in the winter and things like that. We could actually get a lot of funding for making it into what it could be, but this facility would not be conducive to that without doing a ridiculous amount of remodeling. And we would have to file for those grants before we went forward with it. So, we're going backwards in this
What's the square footage on the computer room itself, do you know?
4,000 square feet.
Yeah, I don't really have square footage. What I would add to the HVAC comment that you made earlier, I'm financially a senior director of real estate for JB Hunt. So we've done a lot of the due diligence center around, just use life on property, and we understand that HVAC on that side of the property is towards its end stages. Some of the estimates that we had as early as, earlier this year, were about $650,000 for a total HVAC replacement on that building.
I'm gonna tell you that I've already pulled models and serial numbers. That's low. That's beyond low.
Yeah, I mean, I was working with our contractors. I'm not exactly certain.
I know your contractors. I worked for the largest mechanical company in Northwest Arkansas. I know exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay. Yeah, we'd be welcome to share that information with you all during the due diligence process.
And I'd be welcome to share mine with you.
Okay. Yeah, we're all about transparency of information, and is anything to help you out, make a decision that's educated for you all is kind of our point.
My numbers don't lie.
Okay.
And then again, we don't have to go to the same size units, because the usage, the data center throws out a bunch of...
Actually, you do. You have to have enough change for the air volume in the building for how many people and for how many square feet. As a city, we have a city inspector here that knows that we have to have enough changes in air volume, yes. Those 235 tons have to be there, the 712 tons have to be there, the fresh air has to be there. And they are not up to current code. So what's gonna happen is, just replacing what's currently there, you have to bring it up to the current code. We're gonna have to have fresh airs, we're gonna have to have economizers, we're gonna have to have VAVs.
Maybe there'd be an opportunity for us to link up after this and share information, and I would be happy to give you what we have done so far, and see where the discrepancies are between the two. Have you had written estimates at this point?
I don't have written estimates, but I have all the information. Here, I have it at work.
Okay. Let me grab your information after.
Sure.
That's right. Any other questions?
What was your name, sir?
Kyle Davis.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Chief, what is the number of personnel currently?
We're slotted for 32, that's including dispatchers, well, 33, with the code enforcement dispatchers, officers and auxiliary.
And what would you consider fully staffed? What number?
That would be 32, 33.
Okay. So you're fully staffed currently?
No, I'm not staffed right now. Those are slots.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess from your perspective, Chief, what are the advantage or disadvantages of this location versus here? As far as your response, what are some of the...
Yeah, obviously, the response for the largest employer in the city is a big deal for me.
I hear you. My bigger one is that elementary school over there.
Absolutely. This is also part of the same philosophy, if you will. I know what a bad guy wants, and that's body count. And if an officer is there, and all the elementary schools, and in the biggest spot where there are people stationary in the city, that's a deterrent, and that's a big deal.
Question about, didn't we got, like, we, there was a grant for a resource officer, like, paid half?
That was attempted, and that didn't work out. So, we're actually funding the whole thing. I just need, I just need to get those people on board. That's right.
When we do have all of, we're fully staffed, perfect world, how many of those turn into resource officers?
Three. We have three elementary schools.
Got it. So it's gonna be one on each?
That's correct.
No rotating?
No.
Any further discussion?
Eric, I have a question for you. You're saying, making references to all the space, in your mind's eye, do you see expansion of this current property? Is that where your head's at?
Oh, you know, we have so much property right here.
I understand, but...
We have the property right alongside the elementary school that is currently for sale. We have all this property that's never been used, the Allen Canyon, and what we have right now. I think that we are the most centrally located. We are in downtown. We have done things to make this the downtown of Lowell. I see it right here. I see Tim's passion for having the police department, and man, I wanna give it to you. I wanna give it to you. I just don't see this property that is on JB Hunt property as the property. I'm going to say that, yes, there's a big company here, and yes, it's a target, but they also have their own measures in place to try to prevent some of this. And the police officers are not usually sitting at the police station. A lot of times I come by and I see guys around here, but I'm up here a lot, and...
Yeah, it's not only deterrent, it's actually a really good place. There's like three exits out of there. The building does have security features that is nice for a police department, and there's not a whole lot of work that really needs to be done immediately. And like Mr. Sands said, the expansion potential, I don't think you'll get anything like this.
But you know, I could really see the JB Hunt wanting to encourage us to be up there and do some things to encourage a police officer to be in the right place over there as a deterrent. But I don't see that we need a police department parked out in front of JB Hunt. I know what you're saying. I know what you're saying, that we're spending different money, but if I can get you the grants, and I've told you this more than once, I can see us building a completely killer police department right here. This building isn't even 20 years old. I helped put this building here. It's only been in my tenure on this council that this council's been here. I used to sit in council over in the courtroom. We paid for this, and we built this. And it didn't cost us a ridiculous amount of money. We do not need the Taj Mahal. What we need is a great, safe police department. We need something that's either like cinder block or ICF that will withstand tornadoes and craziness. And we need something that's going to fulfill all of our needs and the square footage. A building with over 60 windows, none of them are bulletproof, none of the space is...
None of these buildings are bulletproof.
Oh, I agree. But we need it.
Yeah, they're not even bullet resistant.
But let's do it. Let's do it. We can build an ICF building over there. And the reason why I'm starting, trying to push you this way, is because we have five grants that we could go for to have a city of our size get a funded tornado-proof, public access building. So, when it's nasty out, or when it's stupid cold out, we could have a warming station, and we could have it. And it would be a win-win for our community. I want your police department.
That's a solve for one piece of it.
What's that?
Like, that's, you're saying to add in, like, expand the police department here. That doesn't solve the courthouse issue. It's all, like, clearly, there's a parking issue, right?
We have acreage. We have a lot of acreage.
If you're saying to keep it here, like, here, here, you go backwards, right? Like...
We're taking out the park.
Yeah, like, that's impacting the park.
We don't have to take out the park. We're not even close to the edge of the park.
Yeah, but like, to get to the square footage that you're imagining, and like, what you're thinking of, like, this hub, right? Like, we're still gonna have to, guaranteed impact parks, then we have to, like, increase parking, we have to increase the court, we have to increase, there's all these things. I'm just saying, like, I'm not saying it's a bad idea.
I disagree with you, but I've done the math.
That's like, it's a great idea, full picture, right? But also, I don't, I see both sides. I get it, right?
But I'm saying that if you really looked at the map of actually what our property line is, just for City Hall, I'm not even getting back to the park. The property for here goes almost all the way back to the softball field. It is just, if you go, the, if you look at the aerial view, the Bradford Family Trust property that's right up here in the corner, are the property line for the city hall, is a straight line back from that. We've got so much room, we could, I mean, even if we got that property, we could have staff parking that wasn't right out here in front. We could put staff parking where it is even more secure and have better access. We could have staff parking behind the building that we could go through gated area just like what the police department's going through, so that people are able to access the building much easier.
I told you that at the other property too, that that's my plan.
Yeah, I agree with that. I agree with the gated, and, but my point is, is that at the end of the day, I can't see spending $6 million on a property that we're gonna have to renovate the whole thing. And it's going to be further away. It's gonna not be the things that we could have if we just built it right here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree.
In theory, you could do an ancillary building.
I'm sorry?
You do, like, that could be turned into an auxiliary building, still, you have two police departments, right? Like, that solves that issue.
Every Christmas, or every winter, we're one snowstorm away from losing the roof.
Oh, yeah. I was here when the three-foot of snow was jeopardizing the building to fall in. I am, I am literally...
That we therefore, we'd have to rebuild an entire new building, plus the expansion of all the things, right? Like, whereas, whatever that's gonna cost, who knows? Like, that's probably several million, right, versus updating something that's gonna be expansion of growth eventually, right? Like, we keep talking about, like, the 40,000 square feet comparative to Bentonville. Bentonville eventually is gonna run out of space within itself of the building, and they're gonna have to move as well, right? So eventually, that's gonna be another 40,000, and then we're gonna be comparing, it's never gonna be apples to apples.
We don't have the acreage in the city that's left to come close to Bentonville's population. If we use everything that we have here and did nothing but put residential, we will never be Bentonville's size right now.
And that's why we should buy those buildings.
We can't apply for the grants. Karen and I have tried.
We can't, we can't apply.
There's no grants, simply because our median, no, I mean, even next year, our median income is too high. We don't qualify. You don't think we haven't tried? Every year, we go out, we go through this process with the state and federal government. We use Tom Cotton's office. They have a person who, that's their entire job, and we go through the list of everything we can possibly try to apply for, and we do.
So, a different perspective, and I bring this up because I had multiple constituents reach out to me about this. They are concerned that in a town of 10,000, this is a little overkill, and it presents kind of as a police-state situation. I'm passing along the information I had given to me, and they say that it is a little concerning to them to have something this large at this size. So I don't know, how can we address that?
Yeah, the fact that, again, we have three different storage locations, we have three people to a room. I've got an evidence room that's just popping right now. We're at capacity for everything. So that would be my answer, is now this is something we can grow into and have a modern police department. I just, I think this is the best option.
Chief, I do wanna point out, where do you do your DT at?
What's that mean?
Defensive tactics.
Defensive tactics, we do it out of private business.
It's my business, and he does it. I built it, because they don't have a place to do defensive tactics, to train. Every other department has it.
Yeah, there's a lot of things that we'd like to have, and I think this building would accommodate those things.
Mr. Schein, you had mentioned the property across the way here. It looks like it's Redstone Properties.
Yes, I can give you the...
5.3 acres they're selling, actually more than I thought they were selling, more than it looks like from the road.
Yes.
800 or a million dollars?
Let me take a look here real quick.
Rezone C2.
It only provides one way in, one way out, which is an issue.
You would need to rezone to C3.
Luckily, we have the power to do that, so...
You can. You'd have to revise a master part plan, too.
That can be easily done.
Yeah.
We still don't have two ways in and two ways out. We still don't have two ways in and two ways out, you only have one.
Mayor, what happens to, I know that we talked about this prior, but like this, what do we do with this after? If this goes through.
If this goes through.
City Hall moves, all that stuff, right?
We still have to do due diligence, so it's working with our partners at JB Hunt to determine, okay, I gotta get a mechanical involved, I, we, I mean, there's a lot of steps we have to make, this is really, we're looking at is, okay, we signed a letter of interest, I have, but we're going, okay, now we'll we'll put a a down payment of a hundred thousand, which is fully refundable, we can get a architect, we're gonna have to go through an RFP process to get an architect, which is thirty days. Um, then we can start doing a floor plan, we have to assess what we're wanting to do and what the cost is, and then we have to figure out if that is something that we can afford, and we make, and we come back to council and make that decision. But this is really step one of ten, we're just saying, okay, we'd like to put a hundred thousand dollars down, start the due diligence process and move forward, we're not signing a contract until we're complete.
Worst case scenario, what happens to this building and the police department?
This building, um, fire has looked at a couple options, we have to get, again, an architect in to try to figure out, because they need to expand. They have some pretty tight living quarters where they're at now, um, the fire department itself, where it is now, Ms. Danielle would like to expand the animal shelter and the services there. So, um, I mean, you're looking at, uh, we have different things in play, but we can't overstep ourselves, so this is just, we're trying to get to step one, which is this, and then, um, it's, you know, getting with council after we get more information on, is this even feasible, so we can do step two. Um, we put a million dollars in capital and back for this year, so, I mean, you look at six million, what we've been saving, Chief Coof has, uh, when we, and staff, council's been very generous, we've been putting money back. But understand, we're spending more this year than we ever have for the next year budget, we won't be saving these kind of monies, and we have no bonding capabilities, we're living off of two percent, where most cities are living off of one and bonding the other one.
So it sounds like we actually don't need to be spending this money.
If you don't, you might as well start cutting staff, they're sitting on top of each other.
I have a question.
You have to sit there and provide them the the ability to, a workspace to work.
The the point being, I think what we might be getting at is, if we make this move, spend the six million dollars plus improvements, um, which seem like they'd be quite substantial, we're spending money, and then we have to spend more money to do all this as well, so we're spending money to spend more money.
Correct, and we've been saving for seven years to get to this point. At what point do you do something?
I'm ready to do something.
We're talking about trying to build something, I'm sorry, I built a building, um, and it was a hundred and eighty dollars a foot twenty years ago. You're gonna spend ICF, it was more than a hundred and eighty dollars a foot when I built, and that's just the the core building. You're gonna look at fifteen to twenty million dollars for a police station that's just a little bit bigger than what he has now.
So don't do ICF, do Cinterblock, which would be cheaper.
Okay, we're asking to just do the due diligence part of this to see if it's worth it or not?
So we're talking due diligence, probably you're talking at least six months, not minimum.
We have to negotiate that with JB Hunt, I think it's forty-five days, I, but I've also been told you guys will give us more time if we show good faith. So, there's a lot of stuff we have to do on our end, but we're at least trying. So, we're trying to just at least put a reservation on it so we can do the due diligence to see if it's actually something that council wishes to move forward with.
So chief, have you looked at this property over here at two twelve?
Uh, where?
Over here at two twelve Presidential, it's.
Is that the old Harvest building?
No, it's the uh, the building right behind the current Harvest building. It's uh, just a little over two million dollars, it's enough square, it's the same square footage of what you really said that that you need. It's two-story, it's got tons of warehouse, you can change the warehouse to wherever you need, but it's a fraction of the price, and it's right in the middle of our complex, right here. It is literally a block away.
And it looks way more bulletproof, too.
Bullet resistant.
Yeah, resistant.
More than glass, I would say.
I don't believe I've seen this building.
No, it was eliminated just because of the square footage, it doesn't give you any room to grow.
It's the exact square footage he just said that he needed.
No, just, just for the police department, I said it also need court.
Right, well, the the second story isn't even built out, I mean, you've got, it is a two-story building that's uh, over ten thousand square feet.
Yeah.
And we're asking for twenty?
Yeah, I understand you're asking for twenty.
Okay.
So you'd have to build another ten thousand.
Why don't we use the council meeting room for the the courtroom, as we did in the past, we use the courtroom for the council. It's still set up over there for the council to meet over there. I know you're gonna shake your head at me, but the answer is, I don't understand why we can't overlap some of this.
Yes, sir, please go ahead.
Just in my time from PD's side of it, now I'm a public worker, it's something that y'all need to, whether it's this property or anything that you guys need to think about, how many houses would you guess to make, we're waiting on sewer right now? Total, and what we call.
We have two thousand fifty-eight and we have five more in approval process.
Five thousand, what you're saying?
We have, we have two thousand and fifty-eight approved rooftops currently waiting on sewer before they build, and we have five housing subdivisions that are in the approval process right now.
So you take that and multiply it by two to four people per house, like our population within, as soon as these sewer projects complete, we're greenlighting all this, we're gonna almost double our population within a year or two. And then, you know, the court is the second biggest court in all of Benton County, so we're adding that to this equation as well, so. You know, what we're looking at here, just in talking about this, y'all need to kind of do that that math and those numbers and be prepared for that as well. Because working on the sewer side of it now, that's kind of what we're preparing for, as soon as that completes, like our population's gonna go crazy, and that's something the police and fire is gonna have to deal with.
Yeah, that'd be fifty officers at least, not including support staff, so we'd grow right into that building.
So one last thing I'll say, like, I don't disagree with the need, I definitely understand, and I I agree, Aaron, hundred, hundred percent with you, we're gonna see growth in the next ten years like we have not seen ever in Lower Lowell. We've said all along that, you know, we've been surprised to see Centerton grow and other areas grow when Lowell sits here right at the center of Northwest Arkansas, and we know it's coming. So I definitely see the need there. The last thing I'll reiterate, that we have got to somehow accelerate along with the spending to support the inbound population is we have got to figure out how to increase our revenue, period. That is the missing piece of all of this. Because that's what's gonna pay for this continued growth. So. I'm supportive. It's scary, I mean, coming off the budget meeting we had and the spending we did, turn around and say, we're gonna go.
I just don't even see us being able to pay for the utilities at this point.
I have a question for fire, um, you know, we, we're, in the last budget meeting, we're talking about setting funds aside for you guys to have a facility to be able to do all your training, right?
Yes, sir.
Sorry to hurt my mouth. If this goes, if we pick up this property and we convert this one to whatever we're thinking, does that funding still applicable? Or do you, is that like a, we reanalyze how much that's gonna cost? You guys don't use those funds this year, and we pin them for the twenty-seven by whenever it would be ready, right? And then turn this into that facility?
That funding will still be applicable to what we're trying to do. And as a matter of fact, that funding could play into this, this whole plan.
Here, tell me more.
So if we were able to, you know, the PD were able to get their building, City Hall gets to move out, we're able to take this building, refurbish it, what have you, add on to it, I mean, we may be standing in the Bay Area of New Station One right now. That's, that's kind of the idea.
So it's just using the funds that we already appropriated?
Get rid of the PD, obviously structurally, it's not sound, if we're waiting, if we're one snowstorm away from a collapse. I can attest, in two thousand nine, I was on that roof shoveling it off, we were trying to get it to stop the sag, and.
He kept throwing snow at me.
Yeah, couldn't help it. I mean, we we know that that building has issues, so get rid of it, potentially build a a training facility on this property.
And there's a potentially a world where it's less than what we originally predicted, right? Of like a million, where it's less than that?
The training facility?
Correct.
The 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 training tower?
Yeah.
So that's, that's what we're talking about, the training tower, a training facility, the the building itself, just to kind of give light to to what Chief Coof said, a, to build it, just offices and bathrooms is three fifty a foot, just for a training, for a fire training facility, like Springdale has, it's a minimum of three hundred fifty dollars a foot. So if we could encompass all of that into this and have our fire administration and stuff.
So it's potentially reducing the cost.
Greatly.
Right.
I mean, if you, this this building here is valued at roughly three point seven million by the square foot, if you figure three hundred fifty dollars a foot, so, I mean, by us utilizing this building, yeah, we're probably gonna need another million or a million and a half to renovate this building. But also, in turn, Animal Control gets our building, which the Bay Area over there, that's already heated, floor drains and all that stuff, so they could build kennel, kennels inside there, you know, those, that floor drain's already hooked a sewer, so that's not an issue for them, so everybody wins in this piece. If we start going out and trying to build, everybody just go out on their own and build something, we don't have the money.
Agreed.
I mean, you're you're talking twenty, thirty million dollars. So, but yes, we still want our money for our training facility.
It's not in jeopardy, chief, you're fine.
Everybody? Roy, I agree with you though on the, uh, we gotta figure out, solve for our planning issue, right? Of like bringing in additional businesses of some sort outside of what is already predicted.
Yeah, I mean, this goes back to, I think we had a serious conversation with Rogers, Lowell Chamber and all that, I don't think they're working very hard for us, I'll be honest with you. I don't think they're doing a damn thing for us. So, I I mean.
That was one of the reasons why we put a planning position in to help Karen and try to, she is, well, her and I are the only ones doing economic development.
So.
Drops in, the Chamber comes to us, but we're, she isn't even able to travel, and I'm traveling on my own dime.
Theoretically, then, the new planning person is who is dedicated to bringing in more consistent businesses or bigger businesses.
Now, they're, uh, they will take the load that she's doing, so it will free her up, or free Karen up to do it.
And that's someone that's like, that's their sole job, and that's dedicated.
Yes.
At least primary job.
I mean, Karen's department in Centerton has five people. She has two.
And that's not economic development, that's planning.
And I didn't, earlier, I I referenced that position when the the budget changed, and I'm not against that, the planning position, I just would like that be in the conversation.
Mr. Mayor, I I'm in total favor of uh, putting down a hundred thousand dollars to a hundred thousand refundable dollars to do some due diligence to explore this, and uh, I I think we should move forward on it. Think you have a motion and second?
Have a motion and second? Any further discussion? Go ahead and do roll call.
Eric Shine?
No.
Adrian Flores?
No.
Roy Brunson?
Yes.
Bryant Sands?
Yes.
Scott Mendham?
Yes.
Steve Whitehead?
Yes.
Emily Reach?
No.
Lisa DeGifford?
So. I've always supported police and fire, you guys know that, and this is extremely difficult, and I've been put in an extremely difficult situation here, um, in a unique situation. My husband, um, being a volunteer police officer, me living next door to Chief Coof, I have had multiple people reach out to me that are not in favor of this, okay? This has weighed so heavily on me that I have had to reach out to the municipal league and speak to multiple people at the municipal league. And I have been advised that it is my best interest to abstain from this vote.
So we're tied.
Hello, yes.
Okay, the motion to approve, this resolution is approved, and the resolution is assigned number twenty-five dash forty-three.
Christmas parade, um, at six P M. on December sixth. I know our events committee, as you can see in the back, was busy wrapping gifts for Santa, but we look forward to everyone coming out for our Christmas parade. If you have questions regarding that, Ms. Clark's here, so is Ms. Shine, and several others, uh, I think Ms. Brunson's back there, I don't know if she was here, Ms. Coof, um, and Ms. Linda, so if you have questions about our wonderful Christmas parade, please ask uh, almost anyone in here, they'll be able to help you, I know Ms. Emily was in here wrapping early, and Ms. Shine's daughter was here as well, so, but we look forward to seeing everyone on December sixth for our Christmas parade.
And please come, it's it's gonna be good.
Any further discussions? Entertainer motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
We're adjourned, eight fifteen.